Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the August 13, 2020, meeting of the Nassau County Planning Commission. Due to the coronavirus emergency state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings, in pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order 220.1 issued on March 12, 2020, suspending the open meetings law, the August 13, 2020 Nassau County Planning Commission meeting will be held electronically via Zoom and may be viewed by the public via livestream on Zoom, either as video or phone, as described below. The public may send in their comments for the public portion of the meeting via email to the address below. The NCPC will review and consider these public comments prior to making a final decision. A recording of the meeting will be posted on the Nassau County Planning Commission website shortly after the meeting has concluded. Instead of a public meeting open for the public to attend in person, members of the public may listen to or log on to the video conference. Access and instructions for Zoom is available on the Nassau County Planning Department Final decisions will be made on items contained in Sections A, B, and D at today's meeting. The Nassau County Planning Commission will be accepting public comments for the public portion of today's meeting by email, which can be sent to ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov. The NCPC will accept public comments via email for agenda items contained in Section C before making a final decision on that matter next week. The public will have until 4:00 PM Monday, August 17, 2020, to email their comments for the items contained in Agenda Item C of the email address specified above. Late comments received after Monday, August 17, 2020, at 4:00 PM will not be accepted or considered. A second meeting will take place after public comments are received, reviewed, and considered by NCPC for each item contained in Agenda Section C on Thursday, August 20, at 9:00 AM, where the Planning Commission will make a final determination on each item contained in Agenda Item Section C. This meeting will also be conducted using a virtual meeting program, and access instructions will be provided on the Nassau County Planning Department homepage. Okay, that being said, I will have a roll call. Where are the names? Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Shaper?
Present.
Commissioner Alaby? Commissioner Blue?
Present.
Third Vice Chair Lewis is excused. Second Vice Chair Shapiro?
Here.
First Vice Chair Greenfield?
Present.
And Chairman Glennon, present. I'll accept acknowledgement of receipt of transcripts for July 16 and July 23 Planning Commission meetings?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, John, call the first agenda item.
Sure. The first case is OASPAC. This is for disposition. Public comment period is closed. NCPC OASPAC File Number 5 of 2020. This is to convey a property at 120 Terrace Avenue in Incorporated Village of Hempstead, Section 34, Block 289, Lot 157. I just realized I have to bring in some people to talk about this.
All the way from Hawaii.
Nassau County is seeking to convey the subject property to the Village of Hempstead CDA for affordable housing purposes. DPW approved the conveyance without condition.
Do you bring those people in, Sean?
John?
I don't see them.
Yes, Charlene is here.
Oh, there she is. Okay.
We received a letter dated July 13, 2020, from the Village of Hempstead Mayor Don Ryan, stating he's in full support of having a property conveyed to the village CDA. At last night's OASPAC meeting, the committee approved the conveyance five to one without condition. We do have Charlene from the Village of Hempstead CDA, as well as Nassau County Attorney's Office and Real Estate Office, present.
Morning, Ms. Thompson.
Good morning.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I would like to share some good news that yesterday morning we closed on the neighboring property 118 Terrace Avenue, which would be a part of our anticipated co-development, creating two new affordable homeownership units under the CDA's Affordable Housing Initiative. This is a model that has already been approved for another of our CDA-owned properties by our planning board and our zoning board as well. The only variance that will be needed is a side yard variance where the properties are attached. Because the lots are smaller, we feel that this is an ideal model to create a beautiful living space, which would include three bedrooms and two and a half baths with net zero green elements included to minimize utility costs. And this will be a part of our Affordable Homeownership Initiative that will be made available to eligible first-time homebuyers under our lottery system. We anticipate that the price point of each unit will be approximately $250,000.
Very good. Kevin, anything you wanted to add?
Good morning. Nothing to add other than we're happy to be working again with the Village of Hempstead CDA. This is a property that's been just, you know, kind of an abandoned tax lien parcel and a good opportunity for, you know, a nice duplex unit in the village. So we're happy to move ahead with this. We have done other transactions, you know, with restrictions and deed for this purpose in the past, but it's been a while. So we're happy to be working with Charlene and the Village of Hempstead CDA again.
Yeah, it looks like a great opportunity there. Sean, I mean, John, I didn't ask. I assume there were no public comments before the period closed that we weren't aware of?
No.
Okay.
There were no public comments.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of NCPC OASPAC File Number 5, 2020.
Second.
And a recommendation for disposition to allege?
Yes.
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 So moved.
Motion made in second. It all favor?
Aye.
You know what? I'm not going to do the roll call unless I hear somebody oppose, because then it's just unanimous. So let the record reflect. It was the unanimous vote.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Charlene.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to make great effort, Charlene, and a great result in a beautiful plan.
I appreciate it. We will keep you posted when the project is completed as well.
Great. Great luck. Safe travels.
Thank you.
I know.
Bye.
Okay, minor subdivision.
Our first case is NCPC 25, 2020, located on the east side of South First Street in Bethpage, New York, on vacant land 100 feet south of Grant Avenue, on the tax map Section 46, Block 5, Lots 30 to 33. The 8,500 square foot area subject property. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 80 feet of frontage on South First Street into two equal parcels. Proposed Lot 1 and 2 will both have 42 and a half feet of frontage by 100 feet for a total of 4,250 square foot area parcel. The Town of Oyster Bay Zoning Board of Appeals has approved the request for variances for the proposed subdivision located in Zone R16. The variance to construct a new dwelling on subdivided lot having less lot area width of lot at the front property line and width of lot to required rear yard than permitted by the ordinance. There are a number of other 4,000 square foot area parcels in the general vicinity. And here to speak on the application is Howard Avertin.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, appearing for the applicant, Howard Avertin, 575 Underhill Boulevard, Syosset. This is the application of 74 South First Street Bethpage LLC for a two-lot subdivision. As Mr. Hessel indicated, the premises under application is located on the easterly side of South First Street, 100 feet south of Grant Avenue in Bethpage. It has a street address of 74 South First Street and is also known as Section 46, Block 5, Lots 30 through 33 on the Nassau County land and tax map. The premises has dimensions of 85 feet in width by 100 feet in depth and a total lot area of 8,500 square feet. It is undeveloped and had been previously used by the prior owner of the property in conjunction with commercial property to the east with frontage on Stewart Avenue, which is used as a landscaping business. You can see those buildings in the photos on the screen. See those structures there in the rear. Those are the structures located on the commercial parcel, which has frontage on Stewart. And for years, apparently, this property had been used in conjunction with the business there, which is appears, at least from my inspection, to be a non-conforming landscaping type of business. The applicant before you today acquired the property in December of 2019.
So that, those structures on the back of the property, those are existing, they're coming down?
They're not, they're not on our property. Those are, no, those are on the property to the east with frontage on Stewart and apparently are used in connection with the business that is either legal or not legal on that property. I don't have an answer on that, but it is, it is commercial property. The question, I don't know whether they have the appropriate approvals in order to conduct the activities they're conducting, but that is business property located on the westerly side of Stewart Avenue. And as I indicated, apparently, this property had been used in conjunction with that property for an extended period of time. So I don't know whether the owners of that parcel, those parcels are looking to sell, but this parcel was sold to my client in December of 2019, upon which time they proceeded with the application to the town to subdivide into the two parcels and obtain the necessary variances, and then, of course, to come to the commission upon issuance of those variances. So the proposal before you today seeks approval to subdivide the property into two lots, each with dimensions of 42.5 feet in width by 100 feet in depth. And on June 4, 2020, the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Oyster Bay granted the variances for lot width and lot area under decision numbers 20-121 and 20-122. You can see from the plan that is now on the screen that the applicant plans to construct, really, two modest colonial-style homes on the property. It's, they're in full compliance with all Town of Oyster Bay zoning requirements other than for lot width and lot area. You'll notice that the side yard setbacks on both parcels, both on the northerly side and the southerly side are 10 feet. It's hard to see on the screen, but it's the 10-foot side yard. The minimum is five. What they did was they even, and the, and the minimum aggregate side yard is 15. We have here on each lot 16 and a half. So we have six and a half side yards between the two houses on each lot and a 10-foot side yard, a budding the neighbors both on the north and the south. So there's ample side yard there.
Did you say it was referred to us for zoning?
I didn't handle the zoning application, so I can't answer that question.
Do you know, do you know if it was at all?
I can't, it should have been. I, it should have been, for sure, but I can't say that it was. I didn't, like I said, I did not handle the application.
Do we have any record of that?
I went back to 2018, and I didn't see it. It could have been before that, but...
I don't recall seeing a referral from the Town of Oyster Bay. Would have figured 240, a substantive subdivision consisting of 240-foot lots. What is this Zone R1's? Well, in any case...
R16, Mr. Katz.
I would have brought it to the Planning Commission. However, I can't say for sure that it, when it was batched with the other cases, that it didn't slip, but I don't recall, I don't recall seeing it.
How long would it take to get an answer?
I would have to have, reach out to the ZBA and find out. The record's going to be kept open anyway, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll get that answer. And as I indicated, the, it's really, it is a modest home in terms of what, what many times come both before various boards of appeal and the commission. It's a three-bedroom home, two and a half baths. It'll have, each home will have an attached garage and a driveway etiquette for onsite parking, unfinished basements, no cellar entrances. So it's really appropriate, and I think that the ZBA's feeling was it was a good thing to get this property away from that commercial use and to have development on it, which is consistent with the surrounding area. And to require one large home on this parcel really isn't in character with the surrounding area. So they, I think that the thinking there was, that's with the mixed development, the proximity to Stewart Avenue and the previous use there, that this was a totally appropriate application, which they approved. Also, there was no opposition by surrounding neighbors. There were consent letters filed at the ZBA hearing with, by certain neighbors who've actually filed written consents. Others were approached, all the budding neighbors were approached, and no one had any objection.
All right. So work with staff. Let's get an answer on the zoning referral.
Will do.
Okay.
Would you give the ZB, the TOB ZBA numbers, numbers for these two?
Yes, I do, Mr. Katz. It's 20-121 and 20-122.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else, commissioners? Okay, so this will be kept open for public comment until Monday at 4:00 PM. You can submit any comments via email at ncpc@nassaucounty.ny.gov and do it before Monday, August 17, to 4:00 PM, and then we'll vote on it next Thursday.
And I will, I will endeavor to get that information that was requested regarding the referral.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stay safe, everyone.
All right, 26, 2020.
This is NCPC File 26, 2020, an application from Roosevelt Street Developers LLC for a three-parcel minor subdivision located at 832 to 834.
Out of the case.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, Bob O'Brien's accusing himself, so I'll mute him and stop his video. Did you do that, John?
I took care of it.
Very good. Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry.
No problem. Located at 832 to 834 Roosevelt Street, West Hempstead, New York, on the tax map, Section 35, Block 434, Lots 41 to 43, in the Residential B Zoning District of Town of Hempstead. The 13,572 square foot area subject property proposes to subdivide the property, which has 120 feet of frontage on Roosevelt Street into three separate parcels. Lot A will have 40 feet of frontage by 112 feet for a total of 4,441 square foot area parcel. Lot B will have 40 feet of frontage by 114 feet, total of 4,524 square foot area parcel. Lot C will have 40 feet of frontage by 116 feet, total of 4,607 square foot area parcel. The Town of Hempstead Board of Zoning Appeals has approved the request for variances. Lot A variances, subdivision of lot, lot area, front width from and on street line to front setback line, constructed dwelling with garage and demolished the rear dwelling. Lot B, subdivision of lot, lot area, front width from and on street line to front setback line, maintain the dwelling with detached garage on a lesser lot. Lot C, subdivision of lot, lot area, front width from and on street line to front setback line, constructed dwelling with the garage. This was previously before us for a zoning referral on January 9 of 2020, where, when it was issued a local determination. The deeds for the three properties have already been recorded with the county clerk. Once recorded, the applicant obtained building permits from the Town of Hempstead and started construction on the second home, with the original home to remain. The applicant was made aware they need NCPC approval for the Nassau County Assessment Department when attempting to get the three properties individually taxed. Here to speak on the application is Mike Gregory.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Hammond, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Hall. So I hope I pronounce that right.
That's a little bit better, yes.
We need your name and address for the record.
Yes, Michael Gregory of Roosevelt Street Developers LLC, 204 West Ferry Avenue, Carl Place, New York, 11514. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yes, Gregory had summed this whole application up. We had a hearing at the Town of Hempstead on January 8, and were eventually granted approval on February 7, the notice of decisions, which you do have from the Town of Hempstead. We are proposing to construct two single-family dwellings, one single-family dwelling to the north parcel and one single-family dwelling to the southerly parcel. And the middle parcel is a single-family dwelling, which will remain. We were granted with conditions, the typical conditions that the Town of Hempstead puts on new construction, that the home will be owner-occupied and shall remain a one-family dwelling, and those covenant restrictions were filed at the county clerk's office. I'd just like to sum up what happened here, because I know the commission drove by and saw the other house built. Back in January of this year, I had reached out to Ms. Jasleen Paz, and we had set up a meeting. I'd sent her an email, and I forwarded the emails to Mr. Parakis, that I said, "Hi, Jasleen. Hope all is well. I have a new subdivision to review with you." I gave her the section, block, and lot, and that was on January 31st. We eventually set up a meeting. She finally got back to me on February 10. We went back and forth, and we eventually got back, we eventually got together on February 18th. I had brought my entire package to Ms. Paz, and we met in the meeting room at the, at the Nassau County Building, and Ms. Paz had informed me that I did not have to go for subdivision approval in front of the commission. And so she said, "Have a nice day. Be on your merry way," and I left. I closed on the property on June 29 and obtained building permits on July 2, and immediately started construction right away. Right around the same time, I went to the Nassau County Tax Assessor's Office to speak to the gentleman, Ioane Sportiri, the gentleman there who's in charge of apportioning the taxes, and he had informed me at that time that he couldn't take my application in, that he wanted a letter from the Planning Commission. And I said, I had met with the Planning Commission, and they, they said I did not have to come in front of them. And he goes, "Until you get me a letter from the commission saying that either A, you don't have to come in front of them, or B, obtain an approval letter." He's like, "I can't take your application in." And that's when I had contacted Gregory Hallso to submit my application. So as you could see, if you passed by the property, I stopped all construction. You know, I play by the rules. I don't want anybody to get upset, and I understand your position. And if you have any questions, I would love to answer them, to explain the chain of events. But I did stop construction, as you could see, to the house to the north, that stopped construction. The house to the, all the way to the south, I was supposed to demolish that house. I stopped all demolition on that as well, and I'm just renovating the existing house, updating the kitchens and bathrooms, and doing some painting. But we did obtain approval from the Town of Hempstead. In addition to that, I know one of the neighbors had had some comments about impacting the neighborhood. Approximately 70% of the 200-foot radius map, all the houses are 40 by 100, 4,000 square feet. I'm proposing to keep the 40-foot frontage. In addition to that, my lots are actually bigger than 4,000 square feet. As Gregory had said, we're proposing 4,400 square foot lot, a 4,500 square foot lot, and a 4,600 square foot lot. In addition to that, I don't think you have a copy of it, but it's part of the Town of Hempstead paperwork from a landscape architect from Gibney Design Group. Every time you do a subdivision in front of the Town of Hempstead, as you know, they would like a tree report. So I submitted my tree report, and the landscape architect wants some trees planted upon completion of construction, and that actually gets inspected by the town building department to make sure those trees were planted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So I am playing by the rules. I'm at your mercy. So I would like to start construction again, but I will not start construction again until I have a decision from the Planning Commission.
I thank you for your forthrightness and complying with the guidelines and regulations. So I'll throw it out then. Any of the other commissioners, they have any comments or questions?
A second to thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for NCPC File Number 26.
You can't make a motion.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. You're right.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, we're so used to it, right?
Yeah, so this will remain open until Monday?
Yes. Thank you.
Be used to it by now.
Yeah.
I was a little taken off guard there for a second.
Okay, so this matter will remain open until, for public comment, until Monday, August 13, at 4:00 PM. Any comments should be submitted to NCPC@nassaucounty.ny.gov before 4:00 PM on Monday. Any comments received after that will not be considered.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the board, thank you.
Next case?
This case is NCPC File 27, 2020, an application from Timothy and Jennifer O'Neil for a two-parcel minor subdivision. The parcel is located at 170 Muncie Place in Muncie Park, in the Incorporated Village of Muncie Park. The 31,246 square foot area subject property is situated on the east side of Muncie Place. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has 155 feet of frontage on Muncie Place, into two separate parcels. Proposed Lot A will have 135 feet of frontage on Muncie by 120 feet for a total of 16,388 square foot area parcel. Lot A...
I don't see my attorney on, on here. Bruce Migatz and also the architect. All right, now Bruce is there. Yes, all right. I'm sorry. I got the gallery view. Okay.
Lot B will have 20 feet of frontage on Muncie Place for the panhandle portion of the lot that leads to the proposed garage and a rear area that has 80 feet of frontage on Park Avenue by 152 feet for a total of 14,858 square foot area parcel. The Incorporated Village of Muncie Park granted final approval of the application for the subdivision on June 12, 2020. Here to speak on the application is Bruce Migatz.
For the applicant, Bruce W. Migatz, Albany, Albany, 1050 Franklin Avenue, gone to New York. Just want to correct one thing that I think I heard Greg say, that the rear of the property has 80 feet of frontage. The property fronts on Park Avenue. It will have a Park Avenue address. That's the front of the, of the house. That's where the steps are leading to the house. Because if, because this section of Park Avenue has a steep hill going from west to east, the driveway for the house is behind the house off of Muncie Place. And that, that is the same as the two houses immediately adjacent to the east. Those two houses also sit on this incline called a hill, and the house is front on Park Avenue, but their garages are behind the house, and access to those garages is through a 10-foot wide... And access to those garages is through a, a ten-foot wide, uh, easement driveway uh, that goes behind the house, uh, off of the side street. That's the same for the four houses across the street on Park Avenue. They also sit on top of the hill facing Park Avenue. Uh, their garages are behind the house. And access to those garages is also through a ten, roughly ten-foot wide easement that's behind the house. So that's because of the topography, that's why, uh, that driveway is, is off of Muncie Place. It is not what the commission, uh, considers a panhandle lot.
I think it is what the commission considers a panhandle lot. It's not what you consider a panhandle lot.
Well, the typical definition of a panhandle lot, it only has a panhandle access. That's historically what a flag lot or panhandle lot, lot is called. This has access, eighty-foot frontage on, on Park Avenue. So I would respectfully disagree that by the normal definition of a panhandle lot, it is, it is not. Uh, now, in, in conversation with your staff yesterday, you did raise, they, they did raise, uh, the question of, uh, getting a letter from, from the fire department to approve, uh, the subdivision. I think the best judge of whether or not that was required, uh, is the village officials, the village boards, the village engineer, the, uh, superintendent of buildings. Uh, they, they all determined that this, this property has safe access for, uh, for fire protection. Pursuant to Vills Law seventy S seven thirty, uh, in approving a subdivision, the village has to make a finding that the prop, that the building, uh, it will be safe for, among other things, fire protection. And the village board made that determination. And I think they're, being the local officials, they're the best ones to, to make that determination. After speaking with your staff yesterday, I called the superintendent of building. And just to confirm, I asked him, did you, did the village check with the fire department? And his response, and I'm, I'm quoting almost verbatim, why would we? The property, property, had the property has access for fire protection off of Park Avenue. So, uh, I, I think the village has, has determined that. And with all due respect to this commission, I think you should abide by their determination.
We'll defer to our resident fire, fire official. Um, first, my chairman.
Okay, I, I.
I'm muting. Uh, uh, I have some concerns, counselor, with respect to fire protection and the ability of the fire department to respond. And it is, it's all centers on where the water supply is. And that's the overriding factor.
I could ask, I could ask that for you, Commissioner.
Where's the fire hydrant?
There are two fire hydrants on Park Avenue. If you look at the radius map, if you pull that up.
Okay, I think.
On the opposite side, on the south, uh, east, southwest corner of Park Avenue, Muncie Place, there's a fire hydrant right on that corner, which is diagonally opposite the subject premises. And there's a second fire hydrant, uh, roughly in front of the house at lot one ten. Those are the closest fire hydrants. The fire hydrant on Muncie Place is past Beachwood Avenue. So that, that is, that is further away than, than the two Park Avenue fire hydrants. I mean, that's where, I know you're, you're a fire, fire fighter, Mr. Commissioner, but you know, that, that's where the trucks would, would hook up their, their, their hoses.
No, I, I understand that's important. And so, uh, having said that, why are you not, uh, willing to, or why are you concerned about going to the fire department that should, uh, that should be affirmative response? And we would have that for our record and satisfy the commission members' concerns with respect to accessibility, so they wouldn't be going up the, uh, panhandle, uh, driveway uh, to fight the fire. They'd hook up, uh, the trucks that run the hoses for one or both of those, uh, Park Avenue, uh, fire hydrants.
I, I just think that that's such a bad precedent. This is, this is not a panhandle lot. Uh, and when the village approves it, I just think with all due respect to the commission, I think you should, you should defer to them on that. And the applicant should not, should not have to go through that extra time, expense, and delay.
So it's, what's the expense of getting a letter? What's the expense associated with it?
Well.
I mean, I can. Those that are going to occupy it and those living around it. So we're asking for a letter. What's the expense associated with it?
It's time and time and money communicating.
Bruce. Bruce.
It's more, it's more than anything else.
Bruce, we can't vote today under the rules, uh, by the governor's executive order. Next Thursday, we have our meeting, uh, scheduled for the purpose of voting. If you, uh, get a letter prior to that, I'm sure the chairman would, uh, allow that to be put onto the record and we could vote with confidence that we have that letter. So there'll be no delay. We can't vote today anyhow.
Well, look, of, of course, I will, I will abide by what the commission determines. You know, I've been before this commission many times, uh, and I respect the commission. But just advocating for my client, I just, I just, I just, you know, stated what I think the correct position is.
I understand, Counsel, but all we're saying is you got a week to reach out to the fire department, see if you can get the letter.
Uh, I think you should endeavor to do that. It would make the members of the commission comfortable to have that as part of the record. And the precedent was already set a long time ago that this is not the first time we're asking for that letter. And, and we find that the fire, uh, departments, the fire districts have been, uh, very, uh, cooperative and willing to give a prompt, uh, letter. Uh, at ninety-nine percent of the time, it's been a letter of approval and that makes, uh, our record complete.
I, I agree with that. And, and as a former trustee of the village and former deputy mayor, um, we, uh, didn't assume that the trustees were the experts on fire protection. The fire department always was. And when we had a question about fire protection, we referred the question to our local fire department. And I believe that's, uh, wise.
Yeah, but, but the village didn't, did not have any question. That's why they did not refer it to the local fire.
You know, we've had problems with local ministers in the past where they don't agree with us.
It's not their judgment whether they need to discuss fire safety. That's for the fire department. It's beyond what the trustees.
Bruce, it's a life safety issue. And I, I, I think that, uh, uh, as you heard, I'm not alone, uh, uh, in commissioners, uh, wanting this. And, uh, let's endeavor to do it. I, I think it would be, uh, good for all.
I will endeavor to do that.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, uh, for the public, uh, if you have any comments on this matter, you need to submit it by August thirteenth, Monday, before four P M, by email to NCPC at NassauCountyNY.gov. Uh, anything submitted after four P M on Monday will not be considered. Okay, thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Next?
This is NCPC file twenty eight twenty twenty, an application from Fairwater Builders for a two-parcel minor subdivision located at thirty-one seventy-one Elm Place in Wantagh, Town of Hempstead. The nineteen thousand seven hundred ninety-six square foot area subject property is situated on the north side of Elm Place. The application proposes to subdivide the property, which has a hundred and thirty-nine feet of frontage on Elm Place, into two separate parcels. Lot A will have seventy-two feet of frontage by a hundred and forty feet for a total of ten thousand sixty-two square foot area parcel. Lot B will have sixty-seven feet of frontage by a hundred and forty feet, a total of nine thousand seven hundred thirty-four square foot area parcel. The Town of Hempstead has issued a letter of zoning compliance for the proposed subdivision. The subject property is located in the residential A zoning district and the application is considered as a right. The planning department has received several public comments leading up to the hearing scheduled for August thirteenth. The general nature of the comments received thus far concern the perceived historical significance of the existing home on thirty-one seventy-one Elm Place and the neighbors' opposition to having it torn down and replaced with two new homes. Staff performed a search of the New York State Cultural Resource Information System on August seventh, which found that several other homes in the general vicinity have submitted requests for historical status and are either undetermined or not eligible at the time of the search. A search of the records for thirty-one seventy-one Elm Place reveals the home was constructed in nineteen twenty-five and is listed as a late nineteenth, early twentieth century colonial revival. The request for historical status is currently listed as not eligible. A search of the state and national register of historic places revealed no current historic designation for the existing home. Here to speak on the application is, uh, Christian Brown.
Uh, Greg, uh, counsel, before you start, Greg, um, all those comments, did anybody submit anything giving, uh, evidence that it's historical status?
Uh, no, there's, yeah, no.
Morning, Counselor.
Good morning, uh, Chairman, members. Christian Brown, three, three, three Earl Lovington Boulevard, Suite six oh one, Uniondale for the applicant. Uh, thank you for entertaining the application today. It's been covered, uh, as usual in detail. This is an as-of-right subdivision in the Residence A zoning district of the town, which is a designation you don't see often. It's a little bit of a, uh, upzone from typical Residence B. Uh, but nonetheless, these two proposed lots are, both well exceed the lot area minimum. Uh, one lot is just under ten, is ninety-seven hundred square feet. The other lot would be just over ten thousand square feet. And if you look at the radius map, you'll see that the proposed lot sizes are just right in keeping with the, um, the nature of the neighborhood, which is composed of, uh, larger lots than you typically see in the Town of Hempstead of, uh, around eight thousand square feet. I would say it's probably about the average. And these lots will be, uh, probably slightly larger than the average, but, uh, I think, uh, just a quick glance at the radius map shows that they will be, uh, in keeping with the character of the area. And they do, they do comply with zoning and the homes built on the lots will fully comply with zoning. No variances will be necessary. I had a chance to look at some of the comments from the public. Um, I understand, uh, people don't like to see what they regard as a, a, a nice old home torn down, but I think as, uh, staff has done an excellent job researching the matter and there's no legal basis on which to find that the home cannot be uh, altered or demolished. So, uh, I don't think that's much, really has any legal, uh, standing, uh, uh, you know, uh, for the commission to, to, uh, linger upon. Uh, I did speak with my client. Uh, normally, if we weren't under these circumstances, he would have been present. He is a, uh, a builder who's built many, many homes throughout Town of Hempstead, Town of Oyster Bay. Um, he is willing to provide his contact information to any of the neighbors. He will put up a sign on the property uh, if approved with his office contact information. And he'll be happy to speak personally with anybody who wishes to speak to him about the plans and how he builds and, and, and so forth. He's uh, been through this before and he emphasized to me that he's always ended up having an excellent relationship with uh, the neighbors, uh, around any of his projects. So, uh, I will ensure that he keeps to his word and that he provides contact information, uh, to anybody who wishes to speak with him uh, and, and make sure that he, he keeps everyone informed as to what he's doing and what his plans are. But otherwise, this, uh, is a typical minor two-lot as-of-right, uh, zoning compliant subdivision. And we'd ask you to, uh, to approve the application.
Commissioners?
So, uh, Counselor, uh, you couldn't bring out a crowd today because of the, uh, current, uh, uh, pandemic, we don't have in-person meetings. So you, but you brought out a lot of emails. So thank you very much for that.
Well, it, uh, I like to keep consistent, but, uh, everybody's getting their, their say, uh, still. And, uh, as I said, I would have had, uh, Mr. Pizzotti, who's the principal of, uh, the Fairwater Builders, online with me. Uh, if not for the, you know, difficulties of, of, uh, the way you've been running the meetings, but.
Since he could be here to hear our comments, please share with him the emails from the neighbors and make every effort for him to be responsive to the neighbors.
I will.
Before sweet vote.
I will, Mr. Greenfield. I've already shared the emails with him. He's aware of the concerns. And as I said, I will, uh, ensure that he provide his contact information and it will be posted prominently on the, on the site.
And if you or he could get back to the people that emailed, I think the commission would appreciate that effort.
Sure, I, I, I can send it an email to all the contact information that, that I've been provided.
Okay, uh, I think that goes a long way in building community trust and, and having to be a good neighbor on a, a forward, uh, basis.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So we're going to move. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
All right, take care, everyone.
We move on to zoning. I just want to read into the record that the Nassau County Planning Commission will be accepting, uh, public comments on the, uh, previous agenda items under C uh, until Monday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty, by email, which can be sent to NCPC at NassauCountyNY.gov. The planning commission will accept public comments via email for the agenda items contained in section C before making a final decision on the matter. The public will have until four P M, Monday, August seventeenth, uh, to email their comments for items contained in agenda item C to the email address specified, which again is NCPC at NassauCountyNY.gov. Late comments received after Monday, August seventeenth at four P M will not be accepted or nor considered. Uh, a second meeting will take place after public comments are received, reviewed, and considered by the NCPC for each item contained in agenda item C on August twentieth, twenty twenty, at nine A M, where the planning commission will make a final deterrent decision on each item contained in agenda item C. This meeting will also be conducted using a virtual meeting program and access instructions will be provided on Nassau County Planning Department homepage. Okay, moving on to zoning.
Okay. Um.
Shapiro, all yours.
All right, um, let's take care of the, um, L Ds first. Uh, there any other questions on any of the L Ds, which are items one, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, and thirteen?
Um, Commissioner Shapiro?
Yeah.
At the, uh, I wanted to discuss at the pre-meeting, item number thirteen. Uh, as I had the second thoughts about this that I articulated to Sean yesterday, but I didn't get a chance to discuss it. So, um, I ha, I, I do have some concerns with, with that, uh, substantive flag, that subdivision.
Oh, you want to start that?
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we L D all the others and then discuss thirteen?
Okay, thank you.
I have questions on number three, Marty, uh, Leonard, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Which one?
Number three. The, the expansion of the, um, the church.
Okay.
I just want a clarification as to what's happening with the parking. It's very confusing. Um, I'm looking at the second paragraph, uh, two hundred seventy-eight parking spaces for the expansion for a total of six hundred six parking spaces required for the entire church. And then they talk about a hundred and eight of those parking spaces for the expanded sanctuary. Uh, a total of seven hundred fifty, uh, you know, and so on. Uh, a total of 750, uh, you know, and so on and so forth.
Seats, seats, not parking spaces.
Yeah, right. Okay, sorry. And then how, you know, how exactly this all adds up? Uh, I don't know. I don't understand how many parking spaces will be on the site and how many.
Very few on the site, 19. A parking study, uh, was, was done and you have to understand that all of the uses on this expanded church, uh, with, with classrooms and, and other uses are going to be utilized simultaneously. The biggest use obviously is going to be the, the sanctuary, which is, which will be on Sundays and, and holidays.
Well, you don't hear you, Marty.
Yeah.
So if there's 600, by, by zoning requirement, 606 parking spaces, none, none provided. How many are actually?
Not none, 19.
No, 19. Okay, essentially none. And how many actually, how many, you know, uh, uh, what is the actual need for parking and where will it be? Uh, that's what I don't understand.
Well, there's, uh, there's off-site parking, uh, municipal parking lots near, near the railroad station, which is within a quarter of a mile away, uh, according to the, um, the traffic parking consultant.
Talk into the mic, Marty.
Okay, I'm, I'm, yeah, okay. The, the applicant, the consultant had the discussions with the applicant, the proposed expansion of the, and the applicant indicated.
Marty, move the paper closer.
I'm trying to read through screens, okay? It's not that easy. All right, I got the paper, but I also have a parking study on another screen. I'm just trying to read the science facts from that parking study. So I'm sorry about that.
Marty, can't you move the phone closer to it?
I'm as close as I can get to the speaker on the, uh, let, let me see, hold on, hold on, let me see what I can read. What is this? Hello?
I hear you. Go ahead.
In, in any case, the, uh, the, the expansion will essentially include, according to the, uh, the applicant who spoke to the private consultant, no increased parking activity, uh, in the area. Um, the, um, the proposed assembly, uh, building additions are being constructed to serve a current unmet demand in parking. Thus, the proposed improvements are not projected to increase parking demand for the, uh, for the site. Um, the, the applicant also will be proposing during high, uh, usage periods, specifically on Sundays and, and holidays, shuttle service if needed from, uh, the municipal parking lots near the railroad station, which are underutilized, uh, during, uh, on, on Sundays. Uh, they will propose, uh, provide shuttle service. So, I mean, the parking study indicates that this is, um, this expansion is essentially fulfilling an unmet existing need, not necessarily exta, expanding the functions of the church. I can only go by what, uh, the parking study, uh, concludes. Um, so to utilize, you know, to utilize the parking requirements, uh, of, of the, uh, of the town, of the village is somewhat misleading because they, they utilize si, a simultaneous occupancy of every use, including the classrooms, the sanctuary, the office, the this, the that and the other. And that obviously isn't going to happen. So sometimes it's, it's somewhat, it's somewhat exaggerated, the, the, the parking requirements. Now, I don't know if that satisfies Commissioner Shaper.
Well, we don't have any, the actual need is, for instance, the, uh, the people, the, um, the employees and the church officials, uh, are they going to park, uh, and get a shuttle ride from, or are they parking on the streets? I, you know.
Well, there's on-street parking and there's, and there are about 20, uh, on-site parking and there's a lot of mun, and there's municipal parking nearby. I don't have a specific breakdown of, uh, as to where the employees will park in, in this parking study.
Marty, the municipal parking is about six blocks away. If it is municipal, it's a big lot. I don't know what it is.
Well, um.
Derrick Road.
It's, um.
Looks like it's next to it.
Yeah, there, there, there's, there's a lot of.
Pool.
There, there's a lot of commuter parking, uh, about a quarter of a mile away.
So I think to answer the Commissioner's question is the 19 parking spots onsite should be enough to, uh, the employees that are there on a day-to-day basis. And on Sunday, I, I think, uh, they're probably doing it presently and there'll be no change. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, office, uh, buildings in the immediate vicinity with large parking lots that are open and available for, uh, the churchgoers to park and walk.
That I'm not sure about because, but that, that may be correct. I didn't get any information regarding arrangements.
But, but I can see it, Marty. I can see it on the map. And I, and I think that's what they've been doing to date and I don't see a change coming down. And I, I feel comfortable with moving forward on this, uh, uh, because of that. And you're also, uh, your statement that they don't utilize all the spaces all at the same time.
And this will require the demolition of three homes along Mineola Avenue and two homes along Fairway Avenue that are owned by the church. The homes along Mineola Avenue will accommodate the, uh, the, the 20 spaces of onsite parking. And that's, we, we see this quite often with, uh, with religious institutions. And it is in a commercial zone.
It's certainly a lot better than what we've seen on Peninsula Boulevard in the five towns with religious uses.
Commissioner Shaper.
No more questions now.
You satisfied?
Not completely, but, uh, if they've done a parking study, then I'll, uh, I'll have to accept that.
Okay, so can we proceed with the, um,
Yeah.
Motion for LD on the Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11?
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Did you say two?
Yes, two.
If two is going to be with a letter, I, I, at the pre-meeting, I said there's going to be a letter with, with, with respect to affordable housing. That's all.
That's not originally what you said.
Pre-meeting.
So you changed your mind on two now?
Well, it'll include a letter that'll address affordable housing, which we, we've been doing with multiple family developments.
Okay, so it's going to be an LDL?
Exactly.
Okay, so then let's remove that and have that on the LDLs.
Right.
Okay, so is there a motion? Let me change it for Items Number 1, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11?
Motion for an LD.
Motion for an LD.
Second.
Who motioned it?
Marty.
Oh, sorry, Marty. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, do you want to go over Number 13, Marty?
Uh, yes. Okay. This was on the zoning agenda on May 14th, 2020. Um, we had asked for additional information, specifically a letter from, you know, a, a, a letter from the fire department indicating that, that, that the, uh, proposed lot four, uh, four would be, uh, would be accessible, um, by, uh, emergency vehicle. And we wanted, uh, to indicate that the radio, turning radiuses to access that, uh, lot four would be, uh, um, sufficient. We did get a letter, okay, from the, uh, from the fire department, which I had in front of me, which of course I can't find right now, which I was going to read to you.
Sean, can we buy a lapel mic for Marty as an early, uh, article?
Only eight weeks, Jeff.
In any case, the fire department, uh, indicated that the, that the, that the radius for making a right turn from Washington Avenue is sufficient because as you can see that diagonal cutout. And also the radius, uh, getting into the part, uh, the, um, the driveway in lot four, the L-shaped, uh, um, driveway, there is a cutout, uh, that will, that would provide a sufficient turning radius for, for the fire trucks. And they're providing fire hy, uh, uh, fi, two fire hydrants or a fire hydrant will be provided. However, uh, I had spoken to Sean. I, I had concerns about this because I think it's a, uh, an extreme, um, uh, panhandle development, particularly lot four, which is not even visible from a road. And I, I, I think the commission historically has been against this kind of, uh, extreme panhandle development. And, uh, subsequent to that, this morning, we, we, we received, or I received a le, a letter of opposition, uh, from, from concerned, uh, residents of the area. But my concerns predated the letter that came in today. So I, 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 I was thinking of a possible modification to eliminate lot four. I, uh, to, to, to pretty much con, conform to past, um, uh, planning.
Do you have a radius map on this, Marty?
What's that?
Is there a radius map?
I, uh, didn't post, uh, the, we didn't, uh, I do have a radius map, but it's not, uh, on the, um.
So I'm just trying to figure out the, the layout. Okay. So you were talking about that piece up by the water there?
Yeah, that the triangular piece, lot four will, will encompass that piece. And you can see, uh, it, it dead-end Washington, which isn't, which you can see it dead-ends, uh.
Right.
It, it's not a good, it's not a good, good, good design and, uh, and it's something that the commission might, uh, have objections to. Uh, even though the, the, the fire department did indicate that with the, uh, modification to the, to the driveway at a lot four, they can get the emergency vehicles in there. They wouldn't have objections to that. I still have some concern. That's all.
How wide is that driveway, Marty?
The, uh, let's get back to the, that driveway is 15 feet. Uh, well, the, the opening is 15 feet, but you can see in Washington Avenue, there is a, a, a diagonal cutout to accommodate, you know, a, a, a right turn in for an oversized vehicle, which will be fenced. There will be a fence there. But, um, that's how I feel anyhow.
And Marty, if approved, this is going to come back to us as a minor for the creation of the lot lines, correct?
If, um, regardless, regardless of what we do, if the town of Hempstead approves this, uh, it will come back to the Planning Commission as a, uh, as a minor four-lot subdivision. I did speak to Aliegas, who's secretary to Terry to the BZA. Uh, and, and he did ha, he, he did kind of express some concerns with this. I mean, so I did have a, a conversation with him regarding this, but I, I would not have a BZA.
When, when, when did you have a conversation with him?
I spoke to, um, him, uh, yesterday.
So then why, why would you originally put, yeah, which we got these yesterday? Why would you put an LD and not put all these concerns in it beforehand?
I was going to send you a revised staff summary yesterday, okay? With my concerns and discussions with Sean, he said we could discuss this rather than changing things and possibly confusing the commission with different submissions. We could discuss it at the pre-meeting, which we didn't get a chance to do. That's all. But I, I was going to provide that to you, but it was decided that I wouldn't. That's.
Well, when I, when I asked at the pre-meeting and I said, does anybody have any questions on any of these items? Why didn't you bring that up to us?
Sorry about that. I, I, everybody was heading out to the, uh, main floor, so to speak. So I, I, I didn't.
All right.
So the recommendation is to abolish lot four?
Would be, uh, uh, staff recommendation would be to mo, to modify it and, uh, create, to create a three-lot subdivision. For various reasons that, that I articulated to you.
Right? Eliminating lot four, combining it with lot three?
Right, right. Now would provide that, right.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that would be a much better plan. This is really a gerrymandered kind of plan.
Commissioners, do you have a motion?
Well, I can make a motion for an LD to recommend that this be amended to a three-lot subdivision to avoid.
It's for modification.
Modification?
Yep.
Modification. Very well. Uh, to, uh, convert this to a three-lot subdivision, which would be a much better plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go to the LDLs.
Okay. That would be Case Number Two, which I, I know Commissioner blew out concerns about the number, uh, on that one. And it's, uh, actually, uh, the one that is in the agenda, which is 7152.
Marty, please speak into the mic. We can't hear.
Okay. The, uh, the, the Plan, the Planning Commission number for Item Number Two is 715220, because I know Commissioner blew it was a discrepancy. He had not indicated it was discrepancy in the staff summary and on the, um, the agenda. So that's the, that's it. This is, um, this is for a, um, a, uh, a used area and parking, actually, this is for site plan review. This is for site plan review. Uh, and this is a proposed three-story mixed-use building with first floor retail and second and third floor residential units totaling eight units, six bedroom, six two-bedroom and two one, one-bedroom. This is infill development in a downtown setting. The case was previously before the Planning Commission, a 95, 2019, for a parking variance. The Planning Commission issued a local determination and it was described as a desirable infill in a downtown setting at a proper scale. Parking study was prepared that concluded there was adequate nearby parking to accommodate the project with a large municipal lot located to the rear of the site and on-street meter parking along South Main. The village subsequently approved the parking variances. Thus, it's now before us for a site plan review. And, uh, staff recommends local determination with a letter that addresses the affordable housing issue and also the Nassau County Model Ordinance that addresses affordable housing, which will be part of the submission back to the village.
Marty, what, what, what triggers the affordable housing? I thought it was 10 units.
No, 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 no. It's a 10, 10% set aside. Anything, five units or more is, is how the, uh, the law, uh, is, uh, yeah. So, okay, to that one.
Commissioners, do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion for an LDL with a letter. I mean, I'll, an LDL.
Second, who's the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to Number Five, Marty.
Okay. This is MCPC Case Number 718120. This is a town of Oyster Bay, Hamlet, Woodbury, and it's for, uh, front, uh, area variances, which are frontage variances, where no frontage on a public road for four out of the five lots. This is a proposed five-lot subdivision on 5.2 acres on a proposed private cul-de-sac. Four of the five lots do not have frontage on a public road, thus requiring frontage variances. The property is heavily wooded and exhibits steep slopes. Subject property abuts Trailview State Park that contains the Nassau Suffolk Greenbelt Trail, formerly Bethpage State Parkway right of way, uh, to the, uh, to the southwest, I guess you could say. To the east is residential property fronting on, uh, Woodbury Road, beyond which is a dead-end, uh, cul-de-sacly support. Across the street is, uh, is wooded property and the property abuts the LIR right of way to the north. Um, the proposed subdivision proposes approximately a one-acre conservation area budding the Long Island Railroad right of way. A total of 1.9 acres is to remain in a natural state and 0.7 acres will be revegetated. Also areas, the site plan, composite site plan, uh, areas of steep slopes have been identified for each lot and will be maintained. Also drainage reserve area and drainage easements are included. The proposed lots range in size from 16,126 square feet, uh, to 58,325 square feet. Uh, this property was subject to a similar five-lot subdivision proposal that was introduced to the Planning Commission many years ago in the early 2000s. At that time, the Planning Commission assumed lead agency status and determined the project was a type-one action under SEQA. A positive declaration was issued and a DEIS was prepared in 2007 and submitted, and an FDIS was submitted in 2011. The EIS examined. examined a range of alternatives, including no build, a modified five lot subdivision, and a cluster subdivision. A finding statement was prepared and adopted by the commission in 2011. In summation, the finding statement concluded the following. One, to the maximum, maximum extent possible, adverse environmental impact statements will be minimized or avoided. Two, loss of open state space will be mitigated through the preservation of natural wooded areas and the execution of conservation easement along the northerly property line to preserve the natural and scenic nature of the Nassau Suffolk Greenbelt Hiking and Biking Trails. Three, the project will result in no, impermanent alteration of the natural topography and vegetation, but conform to existing zoning and minimizes to the maximum extent practical. Four, the project will result in a displacement of wildlife, wildlife species. However, protected open space borders the property to the west, and approximately 36% of the site will, will remain in its natural state. Five, erosion and offsites sedimentation during site remediation will be stabilized through typical construction design techniques. Six, it should be, there will be an increase in sanitary wastewater flow. However, the project complies with Article 10 Nassau County Public Health Ordinance, which with respect to sewage disposal in an area not served by sewers, would be seven. There will be a small increase in the number of residents and increase in demand for community services. However, the capacity of services is adequate to serve the expanded demand. Eight, and final, temporary increase in construction traffic, figurative dust and noise during construction will be ameliorated with design controls and represent a short-term temporary impact. It should be noted that the finding statement indicated there was severe curve on Woodbury Road near the intersection, south of Woodbury Road, near the intersection of Woodbury Road and South of Woodbury Road that would impact site distance on Woodbury Road from the proposed site entrance. As such, the subdivision entrance was shifted as, as far east as possible. And which you, you can see by the aerial, it's, it's a constrained site, and so it couldn't go too far east. Go back to the aerial. To provide greater site distance between the entrance and Woodbury Road. The finding statement also pointed out that the subject property is located in the TOB Special Groundwater Protection Area in back of Roverley Protection District that is regulated by Townzoni Code and Article 10 of the Nassau County Public Health Ordinance, where minimum lot sizes are established, as well as regulating impervious surface coverage. Staff recommends local determination with a letter indicating while many of the concerns were vetted several years ago during the SEQA process, if the town approves a subdivision, it will still require approval by the Nassau County Planning Commission as a major subdivision, and will require in-depth analysis and review by all the reviewing units of DPW, including planning, as well as traffic engineering, and Nassau County Department of Health during a preliminary, preliminary and final subdivision phases, as, as well as by DPW pursuant to 239F, as Woodbury Road is a county road. And I would think there are some concerns with, with the, the, the curved road creating.
Marty, Marty, you're saying this is a similar application?
Exactly.
So wouldn't we need?
Very similar.
Wouldn't we need a new SEQA determination? And are we going to be, take the lead on that again?
I don't think we will, because all of the issues were vetted during the, the initial, the initial SEQA. I had spoken to Sean on this. If he's here, he might want to be able to provide a little of his insight on this. But, yeah, Sean?
I mean, it's nine years ago.
This is the, in the past two decades, this is the only other positive declaration that the planning commission has issued. So.
I remember it. I do. And we weren't happy with this when it came in front of us last time.
And we never saw preliminary plans on this one. It never went.
No, we did. The preliminary subdivision application was filed in the very early 2000s. That triggered the POS, the POS deck issuance by the planning commission. The, the environmental review played out and was, and concluded with the finding statement issued by the planning commission back in 2011. The original plan here was for eight lots, an eight lot configuration. By way of the, or during the, the environmental review, an alternative layout was provided that included a five lot layout. That alternative, through the SEQA process, became the preferred alternative. And that's what the finding statement was based on. It basically said, if you reduce to five units, along with these other factors, the significant adverse impacts can be mitigated.
But Sean, it looks like that was the original application though, too, wasn't it? Five lots? No, it was eight.
Yeah.
It was eight, but the finding statement acted on a five lot. It was, it was, it was.
Right.
Yeah.
So the five lot is what now, you know, 10 years late, whatever, nine years later is being, is being brought forward. So it is, in, in terms of the broad layout, it is consistent with the finding statement. If the town were to approve these, these variances, the act, the subdivision would come back to the county to proceed where, basically where it left off, which was in preliminary subdivision. So as long as they're acting within the, the county finding statement, you know, SEQA will have been satisfied. If they deviate in subsequent plan iterations, then we'd have to revisit SEQA.
I'm just trying to find in the summary where it went from an eight lot to a five lot.
I didn't include that in the summary, but because the, it was negotiated down to a five lot, and that's what the planning, and, and, and that's what the, I would think that, that's what was before the planning commission at that point in time, and that's what's before the planning commission now.
But where, where, so where in the findings does it say if it was reduced? Three, three lots?
Marty, while you're looking.
Yeah, I mean, you will have a copy of the finding statement that went out to you, but I'll see if I can.
Finding statement references an alternative plan. I, I don't have it in front of me. It was alternative B, I believe.
I'm just saying, in the summary, I'm not, I'm not seeing it. That's why I'm just, I want to be clear on this.
Understood.
Yeah.
So we, we don't have it in the summary, right, Marty?
Not in the summary that I provided to you. I.
It does refer back to action in 2011.
Yeah, but not the context of an eight lot to a five lot. That's why I'm.
It doesn't say it specifically. It just refers to the actions of 2011.
All right. Which was nine years ago. Marty, who's the developer on this?
This is Peroni, I think. Yeah.
Is it just the same?
Whoa, 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 whoa. Is this Angelo Peroni?
Um.
Same applicant.
Better check, because I have to, if it is, I have to recuse myself. And it was, just so you know, there was a lot of issues with this.
Yes, I remember. There were a lot. Yes. I don't remember if it was back 90s, but it.
Well, Marty is looking up the.
Yeah, I'm trying to get back my computer.
That's fine. But, but just, again, the, the application before the town now reflects a five lot subdivision, which is consistent with what the planning commission found was environmentally acceptable, if you will, back in 2011. Now, the design, the action, the, the, the design of the lots and the recharge and the slope stabilization, everything else involved in, in the design of a subdivision, that still needs to come before the planning commission for detailed, you know, technical, health department, county public works, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not doubting you, Sean. I just wish it was in the summary. That's all.
Yeah. It does, it does say in the summary that the EIS covered three things. One, a no build and a modified five lot development and a cluster subdivision.
I know, but reading this summary, I wouldn't know it was a five lot from an eight lot, you know? That's what I'm saying. It doesn't show what was adopted. Hold on one second. Marty, instead of finding out who the developer is, do you have the resolution that the planning commission did back then?
We, we, I, we have that. I'm trying to get onto my, onto my computer, but I, I can't get on. It's, it's in the file.
Because.
It's in the file, but.
Len, would you have necessarily recused yourself back then as well? I, I don't know. That's what I want to try to find out. I mean, I have two, I have a vivid recollection of this being a real problem for the commission, but I don't remember if I had, if I was told not to recuse or to recuse at the time.
So based upon the fact that the commission members have a lot of questions, staff hasn't been able to answer them, I wonder if we could hold this to the next meeting, and let staff do a much more due diligence and deep dive comparing the prior resolution from 2011 to the current resolution.
Marty, when did we get referral?
When did we get it?
Yeah.
We got it seven eighteen.
We gotta take action today, then.
Yeah, we, we really have to take action today.
I have, I have a question about, I'm looking at a Google map, and it's showing the blue bike path going right across this property. Is that relevant? There are bike paths that are crossing that property?
Well, what I read was there's an easement on the back two lots that will, you know, will keep, I guess, access to.
Yeah, all right. That's, okay. Thank you.
The bike path just to the west of the, of the property.
No, it also crosses the northern part.
It had been, okay, so originally, the, the, the trail had traversed onto private property, and about 10 years ago, they had realigned it. So.
Okay. Okay, okay. Thanks for clarifying.
What about the slopes? Because I know that there was an issue with slopes on this property.
Yeah. So that is, that is a concern. And I think that's, that's going to need to be vetted during the, the technical subdivision review, whether or not they can build on this, on these slopes. Now, the, the information that was provided during the environmental review demonstrated that, from an engineering perspective, they could, they could stabilize the slopes and construct five homes, not eight, but five. And the finding statement was based on that, on that understanding and that information. However, you know, that, that doesn't mean that the subdivision is a rubber stamp. The, the plans, again, will be, need, will need to be submitted to the town, the county, and, and the health department, DPW and the health department for that detailed design review. So.
Sean, here's my question though, too, right? So it's going to come back to us on the subdivision. But my question is more on the SEQA side, right? So there was findings back in 2011. So before this gets back to us, it's probably going to be closer to 10 years, over nine years, since we've had a SEQA determination. You don't think that would need a new one?
Um, I, I don't.
I mean, it's just like to take in Len's considerations about the slopes and the storms that we've had in this past decade. I don't know how much of the, you know, what we found 11 years ago or 10 years ago is going to be as, as relevant today. Maybe, maybe we find that five lots is too much today.
So that's something, yes, that's something that can be, that can be, the commission could certainly take another look, given the time that's passed. But I don't think that there is any, if the town were to approve the variances, I've got to double check, but I believe the variances are, are, the area variances are type two actions. So if the town were to grant those variances, the subdivision comes back to the county. Now it's, now it's a zoning compliance subdivision, then the commission can at least proceed with its, with its review and call into question the, the potential environmental impacts that may have presented themselves, given the lapse or the, the pass of time. Yeah, I don't.
Not at this stage, I guess. Not at the zoning stage.
But at the zoning stage, right, at the zoning stage, again, the, the area variances are type two. If, again, the, the town, the town grants those, there's nothing that, that prevents the commission from taking another look at the environmental considerations, given the, the pass of, of time. I think it's clearly within your, your, you know, your, your purview to do so.
I have the alternative two for the, in the finding statement that indicates that pursuant to the prevailing town of Oyster Bay zoning designation, the site would be developed with eight single-family homes. That was, was site access provided by a single access cul-de-sac. The plan, however, does not conform to the Article 10 of the Nassau County Public Health Ordinance for unsued residential properties within designated SGPA. So alternative two was shot, shot out of the water, essentially. So.
And just to give an example, how, you know, the, over the past decade, storms have become more frequent, more severe, that, that would really be reviewed during the, the stormwater review by Public Works. So if originally they were looking for a way, and I'm not sure they were, but if they were looking for a waiver and onsite drainage retention, and now 10 years later, the, the county will look at that same plan and say, you know, no, we really want you to hold that full eight inches because of the severity of, of storms recently and going forward. You know, that's a design consideration that's going to have to be addressed. And that in turn has environmental implications, you know, whether or not this can be constructed to, to minimize any adverse impacts. So while that intertwines with SEQA, I think overall, the fact that this is still in its infancy as far as the subdivision stage, those considerations will have to be addressed during the planning commission review.
Right. Do you know how many other developments have been put in place in that vicinity since, in, in the past decade?
In the past decade, virtually none. I mean.
I haven't seen it much at all in this area.
Marty, were you able to find the resolution from the planning commission?
The resolution, I, I don't have, it's digitally. I can't access my computer. Sean, are you on your computer? Because it's listed as a resolution under the SEQA for this particular major subdivision. I can't access, for some reason, I'm unable to access.
So Len, why don't you just recuse yourself from this, so to play it safe?
Let me, let me look.
Because we got to take action today. Yeah. Sean's going to try to access it.
I have, I have the resolution. Received an application from Angelo Peroni.
Right. Now, do you have the vote on the resolution?
I will, yep. Yes, I'm looking at it here. Commissioner Shapiro, you, you voted.
Okay, then I'll stay on it. That's fine.
We had, oh, no, no. Okay. So none of the current commissioners either recused or were excused.
All right. So I was the only one there at the time. But I, see, that's why I was, I was concerned, because it doesn't really matter. But in the meantime, the biggest question back then was all the slopes and the size of it, from what I recalled. And yes, they, they cut it down, but I think we had, you know, and I don't know when we're going to do this, if it comes during subdivision. But, you know, since that period of time, you've had Irene, Sandy, Isaias, and some other, other storms, maybe not as severe. So I think with that type of a wooded area, we really have to look, because it can be, with the slope issues, as well as the forestry, a lot of issues with whether these homes, you know, can be powered and, and access. They have one access in that whole area. I mean, look, you know, one tree goes down across the roadway, you're done. You can't get out.
Perhaps the, the recommendation could be a local determination with a letter that speaks to the, the county SEQA process that, that will be, you know, referenced in, in, in a future subdivision or in a, any continuation of the subdivision application to ensure that the environmental impacts that were identified in the, in the EIS are, continue to be mitigated, or, or, or addressed satisfactorily. Just so that, you know, from a, from a, I guess from a, from a consistency standpoint, that we're, we're acknowledging that we have done a lot of work, but we're not, we're not rubber stamping this because there's considerations that, that need to be reviewed by the commission.
Okay. I'm fine with that. And Sean, since we were the lead the last time on this, does that mean that we have to be the lead this time?
We, yes, we would continue to be the lead agency on, on the subdivision.
Okay, that's even better. Okay. The concerns haven't changed. It's just the timing.
Right.
Okay, so I'll, any other comments? I'll take a motion for an LDL.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. I guess I gotta do that reading one more time.
No, wait.
We're not done yet.
We're not done.
Okay.
We still have 10 and 12 to do.
Correct.
Okay, let me, uh, let me read, uh, item number 10 into the record. NCPC case number eight, five, one, two, oh. This is the Village of Westbury. It's for special use in area variances. This is a proposed partial four-story, thirty-six unit residential apartment building that requires especially use to build surface parking beneath the raised first floor where it, where apartments will be, as well as the following variances. Height, four stories and forty-two feet proposed, maximum three stories, forty feet permitted. Two, parking, thirty-six spaces proposed, mac, uh, minimum, not maximum, minimum thirty-nine, um, spaces required. Three, parking location, at-grade parking on the building can occupy up to thirty percent of building coverage. Um, eighty-six percent proposed, I'm not sure what, what that's all about. And four, parking specifications. Area devoted to parking stalls, including aisles, must average at least three hundred and fifty square feet. With the plan, with this plan, they average three hundred and seventeen square feet. Uh, the site consisting of fifteen thousand one hundred square feet is double frontage on Drexel Avenue and Belmont Avenue, off of Post Avenue, and is occupied by a two-story stucco commercial building and a small one-story commercial building, which I think is a fish store. Parking and ex, uh, and accessory structures. To the west is a municipal parking lot, to the north, um, to the, um, north is municipal parking, uh, across, uh, Drexel. Um, to the east is, uh, is Post Avenue and, uh, and storefronts. Um, and there was also a three-story office building across, uh, Bel, uh, the, um, Belmont Avenue. I should say a, a, yeah, three stories above surface parks or four stories. Um, the proposed building will consist of units on the second and third and fourth floors. The fourth floor will also include resident lounge, gym, and resident roof terrace. There is also a, a, an outside landscaped pavement recreational area along the east side of the building. Access will be provided on both Drexel Avenue and Belmont Avenue. There will be eight studio apartments, seven two-bedroom apartments, and twenty-one one-bedroom apartments. The village attorney indicated that the village will require a workforce housing set aside in, in compliance with the, the Workforce Housing Act, but the applicant has not addressed this at this stage in the process. So staff is recommending a local determination with a letter that addresses, uh, affordable housing and the county's model ordinance.
Marty, I hate to ask you this.
Yeah.
Can you tell me who the principals are in this?
Um, uh, yes, I, I have to access my file. I'll see if I can get that.
I'm sorry to do this to everybody.
Well, I, um, Ornstein Fetner Development and Scores Realty. Let's see if any names. Alex Ornstein. You know him?
I've heard of him, but who, who's Fetner?
Richard Scores. These are, um, these are names that, that I have here. Um.
It says Ornstein Fetner. Who's Fetner?
Uh, I guess he's, he's one of the principals. I, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't have any, uh, anything on Fetner. I just have it signed by Alec, Alec Ornstein and, and Richard Scores.
Yeah, Alec Ornstein is a great Nick boy.
So that's what I have on it.
Okay.
A general question, Marty.
Yeah.
Is this within walking distance of the Westbury train station? Does it qualify as TOD?
Well, this is a, it's a nice walk. I would hardly say it's a, I'd say it's within, um, a half a mile of, of the train station. It's within a mile. It, it's, it's kind of at, towards the north of, of, uh, of downtown, uh, a little, uh, off of Post Avenue. Um.
It's half a mile.
It's a, about a half a mile.
Yeah, I know the area well. It's half a mile from the train station. It's fairly close. I don't know if it's consequential or not. I'm just curious.
Okay, so I'm making a motion for the LDL on the affordable housing set aside.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Last but not least, number 12, Marty.
Okay. Uh, that's NCPC case number five, two, eight, three, two, oh. This is in the city of Long Beach. This is for use, height, uh, area, and, uh, and parking variances. This is a proposed four-story, twenty-four unit. Um, give me one second here. Actually, it's a sixteen, sixteen unit. It's sixteen units. It's been scaled down. The current proposal is for a three-story, three-story, sixteen-unit mixed-use development with about forty-eight hundred square feet of retail. This is not a, this mixed-use development is not a permitted use in the business aid district. In addition, uh, front and rear setback variances are required. A, a parking, uh, variance is required. Now, um, for, now forty-one spaces are required because it's been scaled down and, uh, ten are, um, are provided. Okay?
Marty, do we have an existing street view?
Uh, we have an aerial. Yeah. That's the aerial. Street, uh, oh, street view. Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, go to, yeah, uh, that's a street view.
Okay, so that, where's it gonna go? Where that?
Pace. Yeah, whether you're one-story stucco, it says pace on it. That's essentially where it's gonna be.
Okay. And how far, how far is that from the train station?
That is, we have an aerial again? That's not, that's not far.
It's right next to the train station.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm just, go ahead. I'm just curious of why we're gonna.
Okay.
Recommendation.
Okay. Um, previously, the planning commission, uh, on six, it was before the planning commission on six, four, twenty, the planning commission recommended denial with the project being out of character with this stretch of East Park Boulevard in terms of height and with no residential development in this section of the road. Uh, the, the project has been scaled down, as I indicated, from four stories to three stories, and the number of units has been reduced from twenty-four to sixteen, thereby reducing the parking requirement. Staff has, uh, recommended denial. I understand your point, Mr., Commissioner, uh, Lennon. However, the project is still out of character with this stretch of East Park where there are no residential and mixed-use buildings. In addition, it is still greater height than other buildings in the area and will result in a major parking shortfall. Finally, the project does not meet the, the standards for granting a used variance. One applicant can't realize a reasonable return. Two, hardship relating to the property is unique. Three, if granted, will not alter the character of the neighborhood. Four, alleged hardship has, has not been self-created. Uh, I understand your point that it is walkable, but the, the, uh, the, the city may consider studying, uh, you know, allowing, uh, doing a, a plan along this section of East Park Avenue that allows residential. We're just trying to apply the standards of, of, uh.
Well, it, it doesn't back up to residential? Aren't those residential homes on the back side of it?
Yeah, on East Chester Street.
But that's, yeah, those are single fam, yeah, this is along East Park. That's all I'm saying.
And East Walnut Avenue on the south side.
Yeah, those are homes.
Residential.
But not along East Park. That's all. I wasn't necessarily referring to the, but you do make a good point in terms of, uh, you know, walkability to the railroad station.
And isn't it also, there's, they're calling for mixed use, so it's, it still would be, you know, commercial.
It's still not permitted. That's all I'm saying. It requires a used variance.
Yeah.
Mixed use is not permitted as our, and, and residential is approved.
Yeah, but if we gave it an LD, they'd have to go for the mixed use variance.
They'd have to get the variance, uh, right, uh, from the, uh, from the city of, uh, the used variance from the city of Long Beach.
Would that be, was that being LDL?
Well, and the commission, the commission can handle it, uh, with an LDL, uh, what would the, uh, what would the letter say?
That we, well, we can include some of your concerns, but also in terms of the mixed use variance.
Right. And we, we could, we could structure a letter. We could indicate that from the standpoint of walkability to the railroad station, it makes sense, but it still requires a used variance that the, uh, that the, the city should, should be made aware of for the, for the, what, from, from, from a location standpoint and walkability and accessibility, it makes sense, but it also doesn't come, it does all, it will potentially alter the character of, of this section of East Park. That's all.
But wouldn't, they'd have to get the variance before they could build it anyway, no?
They, they, they have to get the, uh, the area and used variances from the city of Long Beach before they, or issue building permits.
So, Marty.
Yes.
Marty, I'm not really, I mean, I know Long Beach, but I'm not really familiar with this street. Well, I mean, you said it's out of character. I, I mean.
Well, there aren't any other residential, uh, properties along this stretch, nor are there any that, that tall, even though they have reduced the height from four to three. Four was way out of character in terms of height. Three is still out of character because it's one story and two sto, and, and some two-story.
Okay, cause I'm just, I'm just looking at the picture and I'm just thinking about the streets in Long Beach. So that in the, so where that little square is where the property would be.
Right.
In the center, that median, that's all parking there. And then on the other side of the street, aren't those residential properties?
No, those are.
Commercial. No, those are commercial. The east, the, the southerly, uh, the southerly section of, e, e, southerly side of East Park Avenue is, is commercial. One, mostly one-story.
Yeah.
Commercial.
Where the commercial Riverside is a multifamily building.
Right.
Right.
Okay, I'm familiar with it. And the only question I have, and then I have to leave in three minutes, is the, uh, is this FEMA compliant with respect to flood, uh, regulations and height?
The plan doesn't, uh, doesn't address, address that, uh, per se, but if.
Can we throw that in there?
Well, if, if, well, yes, definitely. Whether we deny it or whether we issue an LD, we, we could, uh, we could include FEMA compliance.
Yes, I put that in, the used variance.
What's that?
Include that in the letter.
So this will be an LDL? Okay.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree.
And, and do, I mean, do we know when the, the, what is it? The city of Long Beach plans to have their, I guess, master plan of what they're doing with that area, like with residential, you know, um, considerations for the future? Do we have any idea?
No. No, I don't. I'm, I'm not aware of anything. Sean, maybe you are along this.
Yeah, that, no, that's a great question, Lisa. Cause I, you know, I think the discussion here, it's, we're very, we're sort of very focused on this, on the site. It's a very micro kind of, um, scope here. If, if we look at this corridor at large, this is the main, this is the central business district of Long Beach. Both, you know, the north and south side of East Park Avenue, it's predominantly, um, commercial. So retail, restaurants, service, et cetera. There are some parcels that do have multifamily residential. One or two have been built over the past couple of years. Most are, are, you know, decades old.
To the west, I think, right?
Yeah, right.
There's a six-story building, uh, looks residential across the street.
The, and that, that could be the case and, and there are buildings on, but there are, where the ground floor is, is commercial and the, and the floors above are, are residential and they're, you know, they're, they're, they're many decades old. Um, how, so the, the bill, the, the city has been, has a proposed or any draft master plan or comprehensive plan that they've put forth, um, for approval that, that has not, it has not been approved yet, but they do look at this corridor and the potential for, for change and adaptation, you know, over time. And, um, so, you know, I think the, the location is good for residential. The context is correct, but overall, the, doing that development by way of a use, an area variance is contradictory to, you know, to good planning practice where, you know, you're, you're looking at it as a, as a, as a holistic, um, you know, uh, application. So I think the village, I mean, the, the city is looking at the changes in land use over time. They have not adopted the, the con, the plan yet, but, um, again, you don't want to, you don't want to sort of erode the commercial foundation of, of this corridor because it's essential to the, to the, to the city.
I think we've asked other communities if they wanted to start changing their districts. Why don't they just do that and send it to us?
Yeah, if they don't want to do the, make the effort. That's why they don't do it. Look, Nassau County, we're not doing it.
Sean, in their draft plan, was this gonna be part of a mixed use area?
I, I'd have to check. I, I believe, I believe it is, and they did, they did come before the commission on referral to, for their conceptual master plan a couple of years ago. And again, I, I'm almost certain it has not yet been adopted, but I believe there was, there were considerations for multifamily along Park Avenue, um, stepping back as you go north and south.
So Marty, why don't we ask for a copy of their, their draft as well? And see if this is gonna conform, if that's, if, if that's ultimately passed.
I think that's a great idea. And Marty, if we don't have it already, it might be on there, on the city's website, but we can get it very quickly if we don't have it already.
Yeah. I mean, as a plan, if that's not a part of the mixed use, then why, you know, we at least have to draw their attention to it, I think.
Right.
Isn't Patty Bourne working for the city of Long Beach?
Yep, yep. That's, she is.
We should just call her.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and the FEMA compliance really is, I, I think, a big issue there too, you know, that we definitely should.
The entire barrier island pretty much, well, the, the city of Long Beach is within the 100 or 500 year flood plane. So they, any new construction is gonna need to adhere to the, to the FEMA requirements. Um, but we can, we can, we can double check.
Okay.
All right, let's vote. I gotta go.
Okay, commissioners?
I make a motion for an LDL with what the issues that we discussed.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. So, uh, we're back next Thursday at nine AM. I will be doing it from New Hampshire, so, um, anything else before we adjourn?
Uh, everybody, don't forget about your financial disclosure forms. I don't know if you got an email, but they do on the fifteenth.
I did get it.
I already filed already.
Um, hang on.
Kevin Hardeman from the county attorney's office.
Right.
Yes.
Can somebody have him send it to me again then? Cause I just did it for, uh, Newmech. All right. All right, everyone. Have a great weekend. I'll see you next week.
You too.
Okay, enjoy everyone.
Good day, guys. Next Thursday. Bye-bye.